On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. And Mr. Ratchmore, would you take a whole call attendance, please?
Trustee Pelkey.
Here.
Trustee Bernard.
Here.
Trustee Southwick.
Present.
Trustee Arnold.
Present.
Mayor LaBounty.
Here.
Nobody from the public audience other than some special speakers we have this evening had a request to address the board, so we'll go right to the minutes of the January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. All the trustees should have that in their packet. If there's no admissions or changes to those minutes, I need a motion to accept those minutes as printed.
Make a motion to accept them as printed.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes as printed for January sixteen, two thousand twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Bills, Treasury, Lieutenant, any additions?
No, there's no additions either.
Okay. Everybody should have a copy of the bills. Any questions? If not, then I need a motion to accept the bills as printed.
I make a motion to pay the bills as printed.
Second. All those in favor of paying the bills as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Correspondence, Mr. Latchmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the first individual that we're going to have present the board today is going to be the Clinton County Health Department. So, without further ado.
Do you want to stand up there with me?
Sure.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michael, I'm with the Clinton County Health Department. I work with a grant called Creating Healthy Schools and Communities. I'm not, don't know if everyone here is familiar with it, so I just wanted to go over the background of it a little bit before we get into why we're here today. So, CHISP, Creating Healthy Schools in Communities, as we call it, is a five-year grant and is focused on increasing access to healthy foods and physical activity. So, there's four strategy groups to complete those goals. They are worksite and community sites, schools, healthcare educators, and then, of course, municipalities. The grant overall is funded by the New York State Department of Health and is designed to serve all age groups in under-resourced areas, meaning municipalities that do not necessarily have the funds for complete street projects or infrastructure upgrades. So, with the physical activity access goal, the goal is to increase physical activity by connecting everyday destinations, so that's going to be like your library and the civic center and things like that, which with active activity, excuse me, friendly routes, making it easier to navigate, like I said. And some examples of work we've already done in previous years are some of the northern tier rect rail signage that you might have seen. We also do sidewalk repair, pedestrian signage, crosswalk, charrow painting, all sorts of things like that. So, for the Village of Rousas Point, there's two different kinds of funding. There's the subaward where the village will pay for a certain amount of the items purchased and then it's reimbursed by the department. And then there's direct purchase where we order everything and get it delivered to you guys. It's not quite a fifty-fifty split, but it's pretty close on how it's, uh, table. So, deadlines, this is the most important part. Obviously, we got a little bit of a late start in the grant cycle this year for getting the walk audits done, the plans done and everything, just doing staffing changes and everything. So, we're here tonight to go over the concept plans and have for you guys to prioritize the projects that you want to pick. There's lots of different projects outlined in these. Not all of them are going to be able to get done this year, but if you can pick your top few priorities, then we'll know what we want to focus on. So, the grant year ends May thirty-first of this year, but due restrictions, I guess we call it, with county purchasing, we're hoping to get everything purchased before April first. So, the deadlines, and I can write this down on the board so everyone can see it, but we are hoping to have our purchases, the direct purchase orders that we do, complete by March first. And then, from the village, we would get the signed memorandum of understanding and subaward voucher sent back to us by March fifteenth. And then, for everything that you order from the subaward that we'll reimburse you for, send to us receipts, sorry, let me restart that, receipts and proof of purchase of items that you purchase through the subaward that we will reimburse you for, we'll get all of that by April first. And that'll give us enough time, you know, assuming that some things come up and maybe there's a couple of things are delayed by a few days, whatever it may be, we want to shoot for that April first deadline to give us enough time and get, make sure everything gets done. So, in terms of collaboration, obviously, it's collaboration between the village and the Clinton County Health Department. So, we've already completed the walk audit, and if you were there, you know that that was certainly an interesting experience. It was freezing rain and very, very cold. But that was where these concept plans came from. We talked about lots of different projects and then Milena took that and developed these concept plans. So, the goal of the collaboration is for us to do the administrative work and then for the village to take the things that we're able to buy and implement them in its own way. So, you guys were all given a copy of the concept plan, I believe. So, just to go over that super quick before I hand it off to Milena, the plan gives a background on the grant, what complete streets are, and then community background information based on census data and also community surveys that we did back in October, November, I think. And then, so it also has a project list on there, just so as a reference point for what some of the stuff highlighted on the map is. And yeah, so I'll now introduce Milena, who is our planner and developed these beautiful maps.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Michael. As Michael mentioned, we did a walk audit with the community. We also put out a community survey, asking people, residents, where they were typically walking and biking or rolling in the village of Rousas Point and where they noticed maybe there was some safety issues or where they felt unsafe. And we took all the information from the survey, we took the information from our walk audit and from Michael's meeting with the village, and we put that into a concept plan. So, I would love to just sort of start at the top of this plan and walk through a few of the projects with y'all, but I don't really know which board to stand at here because I feel like either one of you is not going to be able to see wherever I am.
I could join you.
Do you want, maybe you can turn that one so it stays like that way and I can like try and maybe cater to both sides? Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I'm just going to write this down.
Okay. So, as Michael said, y'all have like a couple, between eight and probably twelve thousand dollars to do some complete streets projects, which means just making your streets more safe for people to walk and bike. It's not a lot of money. Infrastructure is very, very expensive and we know that. So, what we've done is we've identified sort of those low-hanging fruit, quick win projects, things that your DPW can do this summer. And one of the main focus areas, which I'm super excited about, is Montgomery Street because that is one of your only village streets, or maybe your only village street that runs along the waterfront and you have total control over it. It's really tough trying to get you things on Route nine and working with the DOT, we understand that. So, we've identified a lot of projects, hopefully on local streets that'll be easy to implement. So, for Montgomery Street, we've identified the need to strike a crosswalk running parallel with Route nine. This will be on Montgomery Street, but it'll still require a DOT highway work permit since it is in the right of way of a state route. Easy peasy process. You guys have probably done it lots of times, but they'll just be requesting to be able to strike that crosswalk across Montgomery. And another safety issue identified there is a lot of residents were saying that if their inner vehicles stopped on Montgomery Street facing west, it is impossible to turn left there, to be able to see traffic coming north of Route nine. So, it was recommended to use a mirror to maybe increase the visibility for drivers pulling off of Montgomery Street. We've identified a street lamp right on Route nine on the corner there that could potentially house that mirror to help people with their visibility up and down Route nine. We've also identified some sidewalk repair in Montgomery Street, starting at Route nine. It's about five hundred feet, that's in like really bad shape, that could definitely use some repair. But I will say that overall, walking around the village, your sidewalks are in great shape. You have such an amazing comprehensive like network of sidewalks that honestly, these are just small improvement projects. Like you guys are already there with complete streets. You have a great network. So, I think these Montgomery Street improvements are going to be awesome though because, one, we know the truck traffic on Lake Street is Route eleven, I'm sorry, you're saying Route nine, my god, why has nobody interrupted me? Lake Street here is very, very high. I think it's around like twenty-something percent, which is almost close to the truck traffic percentage on Route eighty-seven coming out of Champlain. It is very high coming from there. So, to be able to direct people walking and biking off of Route eleven and onto Montgomery Street, although maybe a little bit longer, it's a waterfront view and there isn't that truck traffic on Montgomery Street, so it feels a little bit safer and it connects to the backside of your rec park, to Veterans Park, so it's an obvious connection from downtown. So, we're proposing, obviously, the sidewalk repair here, an additional crosswalk, which is a mid-block crossing, which isn't typically recommended to have a crosswalk, not at an intersection, but this crosswalk is being proposed to connect people to your pier, which is a very popular destination we're called. So, it would be amazing if you were able to safely get people to be able to cross back and forth from that sidewalk end to that pier. And using pedestrian signage, warning signage on either side of that crosswalk, I think will make that crossing safe. I mean, your speed limit is thirty, it's not that far from the stop sign, so cars should not be going that fast at that point anyway.
Speed limit's at twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Even better, even better. And then we're also recommending to put down charrows on the road on Montgomery Street, similar to what's on Route eleven. It's those shared road markings out of the bike symbol because there is no shoulder on Montgomery Street that's wide enough for a bike lane. It's not three feet or four feet, which is recommended by the DOT. So, we're recommending putting in some shared road markings for bicyclists to be able to share those lanes with cars and also putting that share the road signage. I think we spec maybe two or three of those signs along Montgomery Street, just to give that additional warning to drivers that bikes will be sharing the road. So, our next big project, connecting to Montgomery Street, so we entered the backside of the rec park into the Veterans Park and it was identified there that there wasn't a lot of lighting connecting the Veterans Park to this recreation building. It's kind of dark between that connection. And there are these really great solar lights now that actually do provide quite a bit of light, so you wouldn't have to run any like electrical infrastructure. We could spec some really great trail solar lights that are like the low ones. We thought maybe with the funding that you guys have, you could purchase about forty of them. It's a start, it's obviously not going to get you all the way. We're thinking maybe it can get you about four hundred feet down that path, so pretty close to the back of the rec center. And then coming back around to Route eleven, we walked down Maple Street to the obvious location of the Rousas Point Elementary School. And as you guys know, we worked with you last year to do that really cool creative crosswalk with the school that the students painted and it was really fun and the paint did not last more than like two weeks. It was terrible. It was the wrong paint. We don't know what happened because we did something similar at Bigman Town, or Bigman Town Middle School and it's still there, it looks great, sorry. So, the goal is to repaint that. We have the supplies, that's one project we're going to do. And then also making sure that all of the other crosswalks at that intersection are also crossed, just to highlight again that students may be walking back and forth in this area. And then coming back around, we walked down Academy Street, back to Route eleven. And then it was identified that a lot of people, when they're doing a walking loop in the village, like to stop at the library and plus patrons of the library, maybe like to go outside and bring a book to the front. Beautiful view to the lake, as you know, so possibly purchasing some benches for the front of the library. And we have this really cool concept idea, which you guys might see in the back of your packet, I don't know if it's there, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but to not just put a regular bench there, but to put a historic bench there. So, similar to like an interpretive panel, we could like wrap the bench with some cool history about maybe Dodge Memorial Library or about this area of the village of Rousas Point, just sort of like pull that history out and the streets, make like a fun little stop for people. And the wraps are cool because they could change them every couple of years, so it's not static like an interpretive panel that you read once and maybe never go back and look at again because you re-read it. With these wraps, you can really do a lot of cool custom stuff. And our grant funds can purchase all of the stuff that I'm mentioning here. And then we also identified a cool, you know, couple of places where you guys could focus on some placemaking ideas like planters, maybe some banners, interpretive signage, and last but not least, placemaking ideas. One of the other concepts we have on here is similar again to something we proposed last year, which is decals to put on your sidewalks. So, they would be round decals on the sidewalk and they would direct people to downtown. So, they would say something like, I put a very, very beginning draft concept in your packet and I used your new charter course in Rousas Point logo and it's sort of like chart your course to downtown. And it would say like, you know, it's only a five or ten minute walk to Lake Street where there's, you know, restaurants and shops and businesses. So, it's, one, encouraging people to be walking and biking to downtown, two, it's encouraging people to come to downtown, so it's economic, right? And then the key is to put them in like appropriate locations, your neighborhoods and also by your marinas. You want to pull those people into your down town, put them up here in that parus tree trail, like pull people that way. So, you're just like directing people to your downtown. Just kind of some cool project and again, our grant can pay for that as well. We would need some further developments, identify those locations and obviously come up with the design, but again, and done. And I think that is pretty much it for projects and maybe some other small ones listed in there. We've identified way more than eight to twelve thousand dollars in projects, so your, your job is to prioritize. You don't have to do it tonight, but Michael does want it very, very soon. If you could figure out which ones you definitely want to focus on, that way you can start ordering materials. Because as he said, the health department has to spend that money by a certain date or the New York State Department of Health takes it back. So, you guys have to order some stuff sooner than later. You're not expected to complete these projects by April first. The goal is just to order all the materials and get them done this summer when you can fit it in your schedule, your highway department's schedule. So, again, this is free money, but there's no such thing as free money. Your highway department is going to have to do all the implementation, we cannot pay for the labor. And I think that's it. If anyone has any questions or like would you want to add anything?
No, one thing I forgot to mention with the subaward is the reason that we need it, we need the proof of purchases from you guys by April first is because it takes an absurd amount of time for to clear through the county. And if we don't spend it by May thirty-first, then we can't reimburse you guys. And so, then it kind of defeats the purpose of the grant.
Government red tape and paperwork, we all know, certainly exists, but I think we have enough time.
You didn't say nothing about the traffic, speed limit signs that come on Maple Street for the school, so.
Oh, the radar signs?
Radar.
Yeah, we, um.
It's in here.
It's under, but you didn't mention it.
I'm sorry.
But yeah, that's definitely something we can do as well. We have, we have to see how the funding works, unless that's one of the projects that you want to prioritize, but if it's not, there's a chance that the funding could come from extra funds that we have, not in the subaward and the direct purchase allotment. It could potentially be, but it depends on how anything else works out.
Basically, we only have extra money to do that, plus the projects. So, prioritize your projects, that's the bottom line. Use that list that's in this plan. This is more comprehensive than this, this is sort of just like highlighting all the fun ones, but use the list in here, rate them, ones or whatever, and get that to the health department.
I just want to say on behalf of the board, I thank you for taking the time to go out with us at night. And I know you spent a lot of work, just so I can see what you've done here, just making our, trying to make our village better to walk in, ride our bicycle in, make it safer, whether it's lighting or whatever, and anything you can do to help us out, the residents will be very appreciative, I know this board will. I just wanted to tell you that I know what work that went into this and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I have a question on number three. If we do the sidewalk repair on Montgomery Street, six hundred feet sidewalk repair, how do we get a bill without, I mean, get a quote?
So, you can, what they've done in the past with municipalities is obviously you'll have to order it before they can do the work. So, you could pre-order and then send it, send us the receipt and that will still.
So, we can possibly.
It's a tough one, it's down, we've had, we went through this before with a ton of Black Brook in their sidewalks and it's sort of like we had to come up with a little bit of paperwork because obviously they're not going to deliver the materials to you until you're ready to use them, right? And they won't probably invoice you for it until they deliver the materials, so it's a shame.
I guess that's my question.
But it is, it was an agreement, if I'm not mistaken, that they were able to invoice them before they delivered it, in that case.
But we need so good.
We use DSO.
Okay. Do you think that they'd be willing to invoice you before delivering materials?
I don't see why they would.
That's all the, for the health of our patients and.
So, just, just an invoice from them for?
Six hundred.
For six hundred feet of.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like I fall.
And that's one of the things that's easiest for you to purchase as part of the subaward voucher and then us to reimburse you after.
Is there any guidelines around the sidewalks, like do they have to be in five feet of line?
They do, they have to be, they have to be A standards.
That's another one of my questions, yeah. So, they have to be in five feet.
Yes.
Because I mean, that's a good project that our street department, our public works usually, we do every year, we can reimburse for it, it's a win-win.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah.
So.
Yeah, definitely.
And the major speed signs, I'll just add this about those, so the DOT is very particular about specking those out and the ones that they spec out are very expensive. I want to say six, eight grand, so it's going to be a light budget if you want, do want to do that.
So, that's under number eight, part of the custom benches for the historic wraps?
Yeah, I didn't put numbers on here because those numbers are supposed to reference these numbers on here and like those are village-wide, so like I didn't over-put them on that.
Okay.
But yes, so that would be number ten, I guess, if you're looking at that one.
Oh, so, okay, so you didn't.
Number eight.
Yeah.
So, number eight is just the benches?
Yes, sir.
Which, I like the idea about the benches at the library and, and one of the things that I would like to see possibly on the benches is a map of the village to tell people where the different marinas are, where the coffee shops are, where the historical.
But that little decals, you want the sidewalk decals, could be another thing too. Like you, there's just so much to do with that.
And for the historical center that we have, give people direction where, what, how our village is laid out.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, no, I love that idea.
And that's a whole historic sense.
I mean, we have a bench there and I always see people sitting on it.
Yeah, we were told that is probably the busiest bench in the village.
Yeah.
But then it wasn't maybe in great shape, so that's why we came up with this idea to do that. Did you have a question, a question for us?
What I want to find out is for the crosswalk at the school, is that going to be over and above?
You already have material, that's not part of your budget.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, the paint's already, whatever paint they used before obviously wasn't the right paint, but we have the right paint now, so.
Okay.
It shouldn't have any.
All right.
So, who the apartment, all the work transfer paint that also?
So, what did it before?
Students did it, whatever.
The students, right.
They, they were just there to like set up the road closure, make it that's safe for the kiddos to be out there.
So, how would that be a cost if you already have the paint?
It's not, I was going to say, it's a free project for you.
The, the DPW would need to do the other three crosswalks that aren't the creative crosswalk, but yeah, the creative one would be.
But the creative one you do have all paint for.
It did look nice while it was there.
No, it was so cute.
Yeah, it was, for a day or so.
So, I guess what we'll do is I will wait, some of the residents, I'm sure, once they view this on TV, they'll have some opinions and call my office, maybe call the administrator, let them know where their priorities lay and, and then I'll get a consensus up the board and we'll try to come up with that as soon as possible and we'll try to get this project well before the deadline, I assure you that. And like, once again, I appreciate the effort and the time you both have put into this for the village.
Well, we appreciate all of you being willing to work with us to do this because you don't have to, you know, I mean, like I said, there's no such thing as free money, so it is effort on your part as well and it's maintenance, so we appreciate you as well.
This is the way we succeed, we're working together, making our community a safer place to live and I appreciate it once again.
Absolutely. If you could get me that list potentially around February, I'm sorry, February fifteenth -ish, and then I can, with the priority project list, I can tell you what you guys will need to order and then what we'll order, so that way we can, you know, kind of.
I will try to get the four Bengals here, get me their opinion as soon as possible and then we'll go with the majority and then, like I said, with the residents, they call in and they'll stop in my office or the administrator and then we'll try to meet that February fifteenth deadline for you.
Awesome, yeah, thank you very much.
Make it easy on the mayor, anyway.
Okay, we don't want to hold anybody up. I got to stop.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so the next person is going to be Martin in Le Judas and he's going to be making a presentation as far as for the grant money for.
Safe trip home.
The water plant and also the grant money for the wastewater treatment facility.
Right, Jason?
That's right. Yeah, this is, I don't have my fancy poster.
They're not even.
So, this is kind of more of a recap of history of where we are, where we were and this, these projects has kind of sat here now for about three years while we've been looking for grant money. So, just to give a little recap, we started back in two thousand and nineteen, where we did a preliminary engineering report to study a new treatment plant here for the village. With that, we put it in to get funding. The bill is going to get about a half million dollars from Northern Borders Commission to help purchase the property up by the water storage tank and to pay for our kind of design process of the project. Well, we finished that in about two thousand and one. Well, we're about ninety percent. It's not done, done, we're at ninety percent, but we use that to go work for more money. Took us a couple of years. Two thousand and twenty-three was a good year for the village. You guys were recommended for award from Plasonic for two million dollars. We went in for three and they said, well, we'll give you two. That went down to DC for the appropriations committee. It's still there, I haven't heard of it yet, but this is the third round. Some of my other clients who've got previous rounds from that are starting to move. So, that, that money's there, hopefully. It may take a couple of years to actually get money in hand, so it's more of a reimbursement. And then this year, we went in for a water infrastructure grant where the bill was awarded five grand. That's definitely there, we know it, it's signed up. So, with that, between the two grants, we got about seven million dollars for the water treatment plant. Right now, we updated the budget this past month just to see where we are. Back in two thousand, we had all of the COVID and supply chain issues. I kind of put a style on it and plus we were still looking for funding and then kind of inflation hit this past couple of years, so we got that to deal with. So, we're right around eleven million dollars for the project. And what we're seeing kind of today, so just kind of give a brief background of where we are. So, down on Lake Street, we've got the village office here, existing water plant, and then behind it, kind of a shallow building, there's a lot of equipment in there. It used to be for the intake maintenance, keeping the water muscles off, but never really got used, so it's just kind of there. And the water flows through it, the end of the plant, but that's where we plan on putting the pump, raw water pump station in that building. The building's going to gut up around, gut that and then that's where we can put in our pumps. The nice thing of the way here is from the treatment plant up to the storage tank is requiring contact, there are no services on that line. So, we don't have to do any improvements to that line besides pump raw water up to do the bypassing thing and go into the treatment. So, that's going to save a ton of money, it's just getting around the existing water plant and it's kind of decided back then up to you guys to demo it and use that for water pump parts or how would you want to use that pipe instead of the middle one? So, that's kind of where we are down at the existing treatment plant. And then, right here's the existing water tank. So, that's where it comes in here, we're going to intercept it there, bring it around, bring it into the new treatment plant, back into the tank. So, the nice thing is you guys have all this infrastructure here, it's just valving and deep piping connection there, we got a small wetland, we got it kind of bore under, so we can get into the plant. And that's, you know, we're just going to have parking and access, all that kind of fun stuff. Throw in more of the pond here. Inside the building, we're going to have. Inside the building, um, we're gonna have, well, part of the history, where we did it during the design, we gotta do a pilot of, uh, the technology to make sure it can treat, like, lake champion water. So we're using membrane filters, um, which, uh, have a little bit higher electrical cost. And I say about the good electricity, you have your own electric, which that drives it down. Or it may not be feasible for another community to use this technology because there's, you gotta pump into it and pump it up to the tank. So there's, there's quite a bit pumping. Um, but with having your own grid, it's, uh, made it feasible, a little less, uh, a lot less countless, a lot less material that you'd use down at the other treatment plant right now. So, right now, this is designed for, uh, one million gallons per day. With, and we're gonna put space in there, we, we can put a third unit in there to make it one point five for any future development of the vacant land in the village. Uh, we have chemical rooms here, um, we've got a bathroom, storage, uh, office, um, lab. So, and then we have an electrical room and a generator, so it's all kinda included in that building. Any questions so far on that?
What's the square footage of that?
Oh, square footage, that's a good one. Uh, I was like, I wanna say it was like a hundred and ten by seventy-five. And that's kinda just a quick architectural rendering of, cause the, the membranes, they're, they're quite high. You know, they're eight, nine feet up, so instead of having just a huge building, uh, talking with the architects, we kinda stepped it off to kinda break that up a little bit. Here is just the kinda, the rendering of where we would have the skids. These are all kinda backwash tanks and, uh, chemical addition tanks, hot water tanks to, to clean the membranes for backwash. But that's kind of the, the inside of it. So, that's kinda a quick history of, of the water side. So back in December, you got.
Question?
Yeah.
So all, that's gonna be a block building?
Uh, I think, no, this is probably gonna be a, a skid, with, with metal.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll have, uh, foundation wall up here for, you know, the ice and stuff coming off, so that, that's off the down a little bit.
And where do the skids, are there doors in the back for the skids to come?
Yeah, no, there, there's gonna be some overhead doors for us to get stuff in and out as, as we need to.
And one skid will do how many gallons per day?
Five hundred thousand. So as you have two, that's a million. Uh, we got in size, these, these skids are, have kinda built in redundancy, so if one membrane goes down, you can just turn it off and, um, there's valves and everything in there, so it's all kinda one system. Um, start rate, over in the Ateronex, they have this same system. And they have just one skid for the entire, so if something goes down, or if a pump goes down on a skid, you may have a, a pump on the shelf or you just gotta take it out and swap it out. You don't need a whole other skid, because they're, they're quite expensive for redundancy.
So we could run one skid at a time, we don't need to run both?
Yeah, or you can run them half and half.
Or run one, one month, run the other, rather than, what, every three months?
Yeah, yeah, I think, uh, I haven't looked at the most recent numbers, it's not much we produce before, you know, it's quite high now, now in four hundred, five hundred thousand.
Right.
About a couple of years ago.
So no, you just have DE or nothing like that?
No, no, we're getting rid of that.
So tell us the, the risk using, uh, that DE right now and the problems with it?
Oh, that, well, one, it's antiquated, I don't know if you need to really put it in anymore. Um, two, you gotta put that DE material in on a constant basis and I think that just the labor and the safety of, there's nothing automated in your plant right now, it's all manual, putting it in, digging it out, cleaning it, everything is manual. And, kind of a safety hazard, to be honest, it is, as we all know.
And the, the hazard with the, um, the village employees working with that material?
Yeah.
It's, it's very, it's not very, uh, friendly on your, on your lungs.
No, we, this, this is the only place that actually, that still has it running that I know that I've worked with.
So this plan is gonna be all automated?
Yeah.
Where you're not gonna need an operator there twenty-four seven?
No, you know, you still need an operator, so you still have to operate it, but you don't have to be there twenty-four seven. I think, I don't remember, did some people walk the white Halloween?
Yeah.
You did, that's right. So that's same technology, same line. So, you know, they go up for a couple hours a day to do their sampling, test, checks, but if there's alarms, they're gonna come to their, their phone, their tablet, or whatever.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty interesting.
Yeah.
And pretty simple to maintain and everything like that.
It is, you know, you gotta deep up the software, like, everything helps and making sure that stuff's running right, but. Yeah. As far as fifth grade, manual labor, that kinda stuff, it, it's, it's really quite normal.
So on our long-term savings, we're gonna save on eventually manpower. We won't have to buy DE anymore.
We won't have to buy DE.
Because that's a fluctuating market right now.
Yeah.
There's only one sole provider, so.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I mean, we're kinda stuck, so I'm just thinking of ways that this is gonna save us in the long run.
Oh, absolutely.
To let, especially being automated.
And, and we, we have no problem using existing piping that already exists, going to the water tower right now, right?
Absolutely.
Would, would, would that cause us to have any relay, uh, pumping stations at all, anywhere in the village?
Well, we'll have a pump station right, right at the lake, so.
Okay, but I mean, from there, in between to where the new water plant would be located, would there need any additional pumping?
Nope.
No?
Nope, it's gonna come right in and come right in here, there, there's, there's tankage in here for it to fill, so we don't have to, so these won't pull out of the, the main that's coming from the way it's gonna come.
So basically, instead of going to the water tower, it's gonna go into the pumping state, or it's gonna go into our new station and then it's gonna do like a circle, but once it's treated into the, into the.
Yeah.
Water tower. So the only thing we're gonna have to add is the piping from the new treatment center connecting back to the.
Yeah.
Original piping.
Here's the tank, here's the piping that comes up into the tank, we're gonna intercept it here.
Okay.
Bring it down into the plant, back out to the existing piping that goes to the tank.
Okay.
That way we don't have to mess with any configurations in the tank or anything, that's all separate, we're just gonna.
I guess that was my question, if we're gonna have to mess with anything other than that, no?
Nope, no, I tried to keep.
Perfect, perfect.
Are you gonna be able, are, are you gonna have to run both plants at one time until they're both up and running?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The serpentine piping that's at the tower now, will that come out?
Will that come out?
Will we not need that anymore, or will we need it for tower maintenance when the tower is down for chlorine contact time?
Oh, no, we're gonna keep it in.
You can.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, 'cause if you need to take down the tank, you need that additional contact and then that piping. So we're gonna valve that in so it stays in.
Did you, um, did you figure a way to put a better flushing system on that serpentine pipe than two, three-quarter inch lines on each end?
Yeah, I don't think we did.
That's something that the public works could do ahead of time to save us some money, like put hydrants on each end.
Yeah.
Rather than a three-quarter inch copper line that's coming out of the ground.
Yeah, 'cause you're not gonna be able to, you do that, you're not clean, you can try and flush it, but you won't have enough velocity to flush anything out. You'd need a high velocity to flush that.
Yeah.
Like a ten-inch hydrant or something like that?
Well, it's six, six.
Six or an eight, a fire hydrant.
Yeah.
A hydrant on each end probably.
Yeah.
Um, so that was engineered into this plan. That's something that the public works could probably do midsummer anytime.
Yeah.
Cause it's not being in use right now, so it's a time to tap it, do it. Save us some money.
What's the timeframe as far as progress?
Okay, that's a great question.
Yeah.
That leads into the actual money part of this. So you guys, December twelfth, got a letter saying that you were awarded this five million dollar. Um, you had until September twenty-twenty-five to get newly a finance agreement with EFC. So it gives us a little bit of time. Um, so we, we did a quick kind of, uh, plan of finance evaluation of this, so. At eleven million dollars, we have the Northern Borders Grant, we have the WEA, and then the, the Stages Defiant Grant, EPA Grant. So that's about seven and a half million. The plant down there's been working great as far as no violations, that kinda thing. Um, so that means it's just like a safety and it's getting old, so you don't score very high when it comes to funding. Um, so they come out with a list with all the projects, EFC does, and then they put a line, so here's a subsidy line, so our project scores fifty-five points, as is right now today. Um, to get a subsidy interest rate from EFC, we need seventy points. And to get the hardship, which is zero percent, we need a hundred points. So I know, I got an email from the health department that, uh, the village exceeded the trepidity end to use last year. So that is a violation, so the question is if they have violated, if you guys have a violation and we can get that submitted, we need to get those points up to get a lower interest rate. Um, so if we have kind of a, a market interest rate, we assume basically four and a half percent right now. Uh, your annual debt service for this project with the grants is about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. If we can drop it down to three percent, that'll drop your annual debt service to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And then if we can get down to zero percent, that'll drop it to a hundred and sixteen thousand. So the way that kinda correlates to end user costs, you know, your average household income, four and a half percent, you're looking at an additional a hundred and seventy dollars a year. If we can get it down to three percent, that's a hundred and forty dollars more a year. And then if we get to zero percent, it's ninety-two dollars a year increase. The good thing is, talking to Chris, the water tower, debt's gonna get paid off here pretty soon and you can, you can balance this for that and you, you may not see a, an increase.
We're hoping it works that way, 'cause I, I think if.
That would be nice.
Sandy correct, uh, I think our tower's gonna be paid in August of twenty-five, somewhere around there?
February.
February.
Or February, maybe around twenty-five.
So even if we start today, 'cause we still gotta get the money, we gotta get that.
No.
Our finance agreement, and project finance agreement. And then after that, you probably won't see a payment to EFC for this project until late twenty-twenty-five, early twenty-twenty-six. If we start right now, which we're, we're, I mean, we're designed, but we still gotta go through the, the paperwork. Um, so.
How, in your opinion, or if you can give me an answer to this, we're at fifty-five, our scoring, in order to get to that threshold of seventy with this violation you indicated?
Better than seven hundred.
Will that give us somewhere around the fifteen points that you're, we need to get to that, uh, seventy threshold?
Yeah, if we, the, the, the violation, I think that'll, that'll bring us up twenty-five points or more.
Twenty-five points or more.
So we can at least get to the subsidized loan.
That's what I'm gonna, okay, that was my question.
So, with that, so the list for EFC for that was, was that not October? The new deadline to get on the next October twenty-twenty-four's list is June sixteenth. So if we can get the paperwork on that violation, we can put in a request to re-score. Maybe add it, do a quick, uh, revision to the, uh, engineering report, try and get re-scored and get us up to get that lower interest rate.
Perfect.
So, but that's, on that cost, that's gonna delay a couple of months. I mean, we can get this finalized in the next month or two, because we gotta go, having to stay here for three years, uh, building code, codes have changed, so we gotta do a code update with our sub. So that's gotta get done, make sure, make sure the building's up to twenty-twenty-four code map two thousand and twenty. Um, and then get it into the health department and EFC for review, um, which could take anywhere from two months to six months. So, we, we probably wanna get it into them within the next couple of months here, so they can start reviewing it. Go in, um, try and get our score revised to get down to October twenty-twenty-five IUP, bin it out in the fall or mid-winter, so we can start re-up and, and being at twenty-one.
Because we're using DE, is that a violation?
No.
Through the health department?
No.
Could we look at, at that violation?
It won't be, we tried. Yeah, we tried. We, we, we pushed, we pushed that, we put the safety aspect, we pushed as much as we could. And take it a violation, we're kind of, 'cause it, it is producing good work, but it's just a, a pain and a, a money suck for the.
Uh, we got good workers who keeps that place.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's the problem, we're, we're, we're getting a little shot because we have damn good workers, but, uh, you know, you can't have it both ways.
That's right, that's right, so, but, we got seven and a half million dollars to grant, we're about sixty-three percent. And if we can get it down to a subsidized rate of zero percent, that's about the best rate, you're gonna be okay.
Uh, that was my question, is that, is that the best?
That's, that's.
That is the best we can get.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna move forward, that's a time that we have to move forward.
Actually, right now is the time because, you know, as everything else, everything goes up, so this is not gonna be any cheaper.
No.
We're at eleven, it's not gonna go down.
And Jason, based upon our conversations that we've had, could you just relate to the board and to the residents of Robinson's Point, um, the amount of grant money that we received as far as, we're over the threshold for the down money that a municipality would normally receive?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're at sixty-three percent, so, you know, sewers got twenty-five, sixty is for water, and we're at sixty-three, so. And that, that helped out with the Northern Borders and the EPA Stag, which is the State Tribal Association.
So in other words, we're not gonna have a better time to do it than we have now.
This is a, in especially.
Whether it's the, the funding at sixty-three percent, or the timing, the cost and everything together, we've been doing this for a number of years, so. It's either, uh.
We've kinda hit, hit the button, we're, we're, we're right on.
Ready to build.
We're ready to kill.
Yeah, and then start to roll, wheels rolling.
Yeah, so.
So the next thing you need to do is get the violations for.
Uh, no worries, we've, you know, I was finding the county was here, we're working, we used to be working with them. He's an advocate for the village, same past, uh, to help with, with Albany and the state department, yeah. And, and they know, they're, they're really good to work with, so.
So we're not gonna run out on any deadlines or anything, are we?
No, our, our deadlines, there, you signed all these and gotten back in.
Absolutely.
So we, we, that was the first deadline, saying, yeah, thanks for the grant, we'll work on it. So the next deadline to get to five millions is September thirtieth, twenty-first. So, yeah, no, we're, we're pressing deadlines, so they're equal in age. The, the deadline is to finish the design, get them for review and approval. Because that review and approval, get it, that's two, six months to get, to get a review and approval, so.
And like you said before, the cost of the, uh, the project is not gonna go down.
It's not.
It's gonna continue to go up as time goes on, so.
And then if we can work to see if that violation gets us any more points, we can drop that and okay, it's down to the village.
We could hit that seventy threshold, we'd be sitting fairly good for our.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I said, what kind of interest rates, if the village went on to get it themselves?
I haven't, I haven't, we haven't gotten on board lately a lot of times.
No, but, for, I know a while ago it was like six or seven percent, but I think, I think it's come down a little bit where it's been before.
So Jason, just so that the residents know.
Yeah.
The new water facility plant would be going on, uh, Academy Street Extension.
Yes.
Up by the water, uh, water tower.
Water tower. Yeah, the, the property right adjacent to the water tower. So that's the water plant, any other questions on the water project?
I think you hit the nail on the head.
Yeah, I mean, it, it took a little bit, I mean, Chris and I were a little frustrated every year when we kept, couldn't get it, or had, uh, you know, persistence paid off, or we kept submitting and it was just a matter of time before it reached us and, you know. I have other communities now, like, oh, I think did it last year, this year, I'm like, well, we bet it because Rouse's is a good example of, it's there, it's just, New York has a lot of need and they go down the list, and if they get to here, they will.
Because this board put very well of just giving up, said we're not gonna.
Yeah.
Uh, make that a ten, I mean, it did cost around three thousand dollars each time we.
Yeah.
So, I mean, hat goes off to the board for being persistent, wanting to spend the money to, so we could be where we're at right now.
Absolutely.
With the age of our plant now and everything, it just didn't make sense to keep pushing for it.
No.
We, we, we were gonna get it one way or the other because our, our cake infrastructure was gonna start, gonna come back and haunt us, so.
Yeah.
I, I think we're, based on your, the, we're. So I think we're, based on your, we're the change here.
Yeah, yeah, and that, you never know, you're, you guys are relying on one sole source of that D M material, that go under, or that's not available. What even the, and I think this is, this is a little.
Drink bottled water.
The, the only thing that concerns me is time lag to get all this done, because a lot of parts aren't available for our water plant right now. So we have some mechanical problems, it could really hurt.
Yep.
And we'll be investing money in, in something that we're gonna be disbanding.
Yep, so one thing we can do with that is not, sounds like the village and board are ready to move forward and.
Oh definitely.
Take that, we'll set up a meeting with EFC and kind of talk about the timeline and see if we can speed that up and still be eligible to try and get that zero percent hardship and how, how that would work with that.
Yeah, with this new facility, would it be set up so that if we had to get real water in for an emergency situation, to pump water to our tower, would we have some type of hookup?
Oh yeah, you think inside the.
Well, would we have something outside? Because if, let's say the building burned.
We could.
I think we should.
If that's something you want, we, we could put a, a kind of a dry, not.
Just put a dry hydrant or something there.
We would have a valve that also was dry, and then you can hook up to it, open a valve and put a, put a portable pump on. Yep. That's something, we, we can give you guys the plans, I think you had one, but.
Yeah.
Take another look at it and see if there's something like that that you want for operation convenience. Something we can get.
Or emergency.
Yep.
Something unexpected.
Yeah. Any other questions on the water?
No, thank you.
All right, we'll jump to the sewer, we got more good news on the sewer.
Yeah.
This is a fun meeting when I got, I'm good news. So again, kind of going back to the sanitary sewer collection system. Again, back in two thousand, two thousand and two thousand and two, we did two separate I N I reports, where we kind of got you grant money to, to go out and do it, thirty thousand dollars a piece, community using in-kind services. So with those two reports, we sent them to EFC again, kind of on the list. Didn't kind of quite forget about them, but we kept them updated on the list and got some auditors again in December here that the village received two grants, one for each one to do the sanitary. The first grant was for eight hundred and twenty thousand, that was about fifty percent of the overall cost. So the overall cost of that first report was about one point six four million and the, and bill stands for, sorry, the back person, instructor wall. You guys scored well enough on that to qualify for that with, with hardship. So the other fifty percent could be given at zero percent. So that included, like, State Street, Chaplin Street, Clinton Street were kind of the big ones for that first report. State Street was really bad, there was a couple collapses in there. And then the second report was just kind of a, kind of scattering. We, we CC your post-circuit inspected, you need the, the lines, we smoke tested. So there was a handful of manholes that need to be rehabbed or replaced, and there's some other sewer lines that you really need to be lined or dug up or replaced. So first phase one was kind of with the big streets here, the one point six million, again, eight hundred and twenty thousand in grants. That's fifty percent. Again, that's about as good as you're gonna get on the wastewater side. Most communities only get twenty-five percent as a cap, you guys are able to get fifty. So at zero percent, the annual debt for that is just over twenty-seven thousand a year, which is right, right around twenty-two dollars a household more on sewer to get all those improvements done. And on the other report.
Twenty-two for the year.
Twenty-two for the year.
Okay, I just thought twenty-two for the month.
No, two dollars a month.
There you go.
Less than a couple of copies.
There you go.
And on the other one, so the kind of the scattering of the manholes and some of the lining down here on Lake Street, that was just under eight hundred thousand, and you guys are eligible for three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, which is about thirteen thousand a year payment to, to the district, and that's ten dollars and fifty cents a year for that one. So, so for the two, you're looking at, you know, four or thirty dollars a year to get all of this infrastructure kind of.
So you got a two, two fifty, two dollars fifty cents a month somewhere in there.
That's about it, two sixty, two seventy-five a month. Yep. So this one, again, this is, no design started on this, it's literally just a report to the award letter. As part of that award letter, the village, we have to go and put in an application to EFC, which is not a competitive one, it's more just give them all the financials and where you may need to get to the project finance agreement. And then you can start on that project as well. So, I mean, again, it's a good year, twenty twenty-three for water and sewer here at the village for potential needed improvements, so.
So with these repairs in the long run, but it saves money anyways, on manpower.
Well, it's more of, if you have a collapse, you guys gotta go out there, dig it up, fix it.
Well, also with the I N I that we're getting.
I N I, yeah.
That should reduce the I N I, so it's gonna reduce the pump wear and tear, less the pumps are gonna be running.
Yeah, there's gonna be less getting, getting into the system from, from that.
Less man-hours for overtime, possibly coming in for alarm jollying off, so. Another improvement that needs to be done.
Yeah, yeah, and majority of, some of these other systems are really actually in, in good shape. We, we, between the two studies, we're able to look at probably eighty percent of the village, be it through smoke testing or camera and the line.
Is it mostly the north end or do you still think south ends?
Uh, it's mostly the north end and then there's a few stock along right. Yeah, we, we take the majority of everything. I mean, we work with, with Danny and Adam and everybody to see, where do you see the problems?
But state was our worst three.
State was worse, especially going underneath the variable tracks. That, that, that's, that's where a lot of the money was, trying to repair that one, going underneath the.
So state going into the variable tracks.
On my house up.
Yep, exactly.
In your house up.
Yep.
Does Chapman, we put a sleeve in for Chapman and Pratt, we never did one for state.
No. Yep.
And these could be sleeved.
Yeah, yeah, there's some of them.
Last time we did that was nineteen fifty-seven, underneath State Street.
Yeah, so if that's cross, we can't sleeve it.
Right.
Or if it's oblong or anything like that, we need to take that piece off, put it down. But if there's just cracks or if there's some separation or small holes, we can just sleeve it and that'll make the, you know, well.
And then you'll be able to determine that by camera, right?
Yep, yep, and that's all been camera part of the report. Yep.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Sounds great, you know.
So that's been signed and set back.
Yep. So from there, for the village money, new federal pay requirements for EFC now, the village just have to put out an R F Q, request some qualifications. As part of that, you can't, you can't ask for prices, you need to do it on balls. Then you can get a list of engineers, you know, it's hard for me to say that because I'm not gonna compete now, but. Um.
Sure, we can pencil.
Well, that's the nice thing, it's balls, so it's, we, we got qualifications and then we talk about the day after. So the village has to put out an R F Q on the sewer. Well, I'm still trying to figure out on the water, because we signed an agreement with the village back in twenty twenty that took us all the way to the end of the process. So I don't know if that still counts. Think it might?
Sure.
So, some of the little money from that. So some of it might be like, if you get the two million from the stag, that might only be able to go to construction. It won't build any engineering costs, because they have some funky rules. So I think for the next steps, you know, I'll, I'll talk with Chris about having you guys put out an R F P for the sewer. We'll get in touch with EFC on the timeline and what's needed for the way it does now that we're setting. We should get a list of, here's some outstanding items, the village and the engineers up here now needs to put together. Some of it's just like plans and making sure the property, you know, the deed sign off on the property can be completed before they get money, so.
So just to let the rest of the trustees know, and Jason can validate this. When the state sent us the, the award for the grant, we had a time element that we needed to say that we were going to be accepting it. So it wasn't brought to the rest of the trustees that we were signing it because of that time element, and it was before a board meeting, so. We, we, the time was of the essence for that. And, and Jason said, even if we, uh, once the mayor signed it and the board decided not to move forward with it, it's no big deal.
No big deal, even if it's on open.
Absolutely, I, I, as Chris said, I, I didn't sign anything trying to circumvent anybody on this board. I did it because of time constraints and we could always back out on what I signed. But we needed to have that signed to go forward and time constraints.
Correct.
I think, you know, you. I think the money and, I mean, the grants and what it's gonna cost the village and the village people, I mean, there's definitely things that need to be done. Ben said that one line had been done since fifty-seven.
Oh yeah.
I think it's upgrades, upgrades that we need.
Yeah, if we do upgrade money or we do it with our own money. If we all do it, instead of doing it like this, we're gonna be stuck with a massive, massive bill at some point, and the cost of these projects are just gonna continue to go up. And this is, like you stated before, Jay, this is the best we've done in a number of years, and this is our best opportunity to supplement something like this project, both of these projects.
Both projects have maxed out on the, the max amount of grants. You guys hit the max on everyone, we're getting a little bit of a while.
Well, and, and since also that saves our taxpayers.
Oh, absolutely.
Definitely, I mean, like we said, you know, for the sewer, I mean, most people get twenty, twenty-five percent, we're getting fifty.
Yeah.
That's more money than that's.
We, we don't have to keep our fingers crossed anymore after we get this done, hoping that we can fix something that went wrong.
Absolutely, yep.
No, is there any more questions, anybody?
No, I'm all set, yep.
Thank you.
No worries.
I appreciate the, the time you put into this and sharing it with us, and the people on camera will definitely have some questions. I'm sure they'll call my office, hopefully, and we'll try to get you this information as quick as possible and we'll go from there.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the trip up, Jason.
Yeah, appreciate it.
We'll continue with the meeting and under myself, I have Resolution twenty-four dash oh four Urban Community Forestry Grant. And I'll just read what that encompasses. Whereas the Clinton County Soil and Water Conservation District is applying to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for reimbursement project grant under the Urban and Community Forestry Program to be located in the village of Ross's Point, New York, a site located within the territorial jurisdiction of this village board. Whereas a requirement for the U C F program, said district must obtain the approval, endorsement of the governing body of the municipality in which the project will be located. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board of the village of Ross's Point hereby does approve and endorse the application of the Clinton County Soil and Water Conservation District for a grant under the Urban and Community Forestry Program to project, for a project known as Clinton County Northern Tier as Management and located within this community. This resolution till take effective mainly the question of the foregoing will be duly put to the vote on roll call. Does anybody on this board have any questions on what I just read? Or any discussion that needs to take place? If not, then Mr. Latchmore, I'll have you do a roll call vote.
I just have a quick vote, sorry. So from what I'm reading, it looks like this is a, this is something that the county is doing, they just need our authorization to do it.
That's absolutely correct.
So what, what this is, trustee Southwick, as you may or may not know, there is a disease to ash trees. And what, what I had Public Works Department do is do an inventory of a number of ash trees within the village of Ross's Point, we estimate around thirty-four ash trees. With the disease that these ash trees are contracting, it's killing them. So we're gonna have to take these trees down. So this grant would reimburse us for our costs to have the trees removed, or if there was a tree in a, in a particular area that our public works crew did not feel comfortable to take the tree down, we have to hire, outsource it, it would pay the cost to have it done. So essentially, this is gonna be reimbursing us for work that our public works department and crew currently does. So it would be just for ash trees with, with disease.
Anyone else have any questions in regards to this?
No.
Okay, with that, Mr. Latchmore, you can take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Alki.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arno.
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. The ayes have it, move forward with this. And with that being said, that's all I have. Trustee Arno.
I have nothing at this point, Mr. Merrick.
Okay, trustee Menard, anything you'd like to address?
Just wanna say that with the water and sewer plants, I think we're moving forward. I think this is a great, two great projects that we've been waiting for for a long time, and I just think it's a, a good time to village move forward, and that's all I have.
Well, we have to move our village forward, and these two projects will definitely move us forward into the new millennium. Trustee Alki, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, just an update, as you noticed, the village crew has been in the village office doing the facelift, they're getting rid of the nineteen seventies paneling and their sheet rocking and making the office, bringing it up to date. Also, the second thing I have is, I've been going around looking at, well, we're working on our budget and, of course, the increases in the budget, one that I've been watching really close is our EMS contract. As of July, it's gonna go up to two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year for EMS coverage. So what I did is I went through and I looked at different communities to see what they were paying. And this is all public knowledge, so, I mean, Champlain EMS, they're about ninety-nine cents a thousand. Fire protection for Champlain is two dollars and forty-seven cents a thousand. Sheezies a dollar a thousand, that covers their EMS also. What really surprised me was Ellenberg, Ellenberg's EMS protection is two dollars and forty-nine cents a thousand. Their fire protection is two dollars and ninety-nine cents a thousand. That's a big increase for fire protection EMS. And I know I asked in the past about what Village of Rouse's Point is paying, and I would just like to have a number, is it under a dollar or is it three dollars? You know, it doesn't, just for our knowledge, to see where we're sitting. Because I think the town of Ellenberg contracted with Morrisonville, and they pay almost five hundred thousand dollars a year for the EMS protection. So that's why their numbers are so high at two dollars and forty-nine cents a thousand in taxes. So I'm just curious to see what Rouse's Point, what we're, what it costs us for EMS protection. Because we have the two hundred and ten thousand, that is what we do in July. We also supplement, we put money away for new ambulance, our own training and supplies. So I'm just curious to see where that number comes in, just to let, to see if we have to let people know where we stand on. on per thousand, what we're paying. Because it is a big ticket, I, I think. But if it's under a dollar, or whatever, it is comparable to most people.
So, our center.
Well, we're thinking of EMS service, I think you know as well as everybody on this board, the administrators. When we started getting these increases, we would have been foolish not to go out for other bids, like Morrisonville, CVPH, they're in every one of their services were all within the same ballpark sold. Whatever we have to pay, we're pretty much, is what we're gonna have to pay, because we don't have an alternative in this type of EMS service. Unless we start our own, and to start our own would be an astronomical fee from the insurance, the equipment, to the training of our employees, so, that, that's, I see where you're coming from, but I, I think we have limited movement in that, in that direction.
I just wanna let the residents know what it costs them, out of their taxes.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm, just a ballpark number.
I think on the taxation in Champlain Town, I think they put out a separate line item.
Yeah, they're all separate line items.
Okay, so I see where you're coming from there, yes.
The town of Champlain is like ninety-nine.
We don't have that.
No, they don't have a separate line item for us.
But maybe it's not, you know, it's a lot of work probably to figure this out, but going through our budget, we should have been able at least get a number if it's under a dollar. And if it's under a dollar, we're still, we're doing well.
We're doing very well.
Doing well.
Yeah.
It's just a question.
No, no, I see where you're coming from.
Because I see these.
Because I saw the tax bill before that had a separate line item, and I know we don't do that.
And I see these increases that are coming, they're, they're twenty-five thousand dollar increases every year. Where is this gonna cap off? Where is it gonna cap off? Where's it gonna continue? Are we gonna be up to five hundred thousand someday? Maybe it might be time to have our own project.
Well, with, this may not overwhelm some people on camera, but what I don't like is the fact there's eight people on this EMS board, and the Village of Ross's Point has no representation. There's four from Moores and four from the town of Champlain. So, there's our first problem, and this has been allowed to happen for a number of years. I don't know what we can do to change that, to have a voice in it. But at the end of the day, whether that'll make a difference or not, I don't know. But I still say, since we're paying such an amount of money, we should have somebody on that board.
And you know, like, for instance, replace our ambulants, you're talking, you know, probably four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
So that's an additional cost to the village. I mean, we put money away each year, I don't know how much, ten or twenty thousand?
Depends, but.
Depends what we can afford, we put away for new ambulants, so it's not all in one shot, but within the next three, four years, we're gonna have to purchase some vans. That's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And once, once again, that's something that we gotta have.
Right.
For everybody's father, mother, son, daughter, brother, sister, you know, we have to have that.
It is a necessity, we do need it.
Exactly.
We do need to protect the residents, but we also need to know what it costs.
Exactly. I agree with you.
And if we have to, if the cost gets too high, we have to pass that knowledge on to our residents, this is why you have to pay this much.
I agree with you.
I think they said it costs between thirty-five and forty-two thousand dollars for training on EMD. With all the training and the books and stuff like that.
I don't doubt it.
Yeah. I mean, it's like everything else, I mean, when it comes to skilled labor, it's hard to find right now.
And New York City has changed the rules for some of these EMS people. They made it more difficult, the training more rigid, more time, more hours, more expense. And, and you're not gonna get people, gonna volunteer to pay this on their own, it's gonna be coming out of the resident's pocket for their own safety. No, but that's a, that's a good idea for trustee Valky.
That's all I have.
I tell you that, trustee Southwick, do you have anything to?
There we go. Making sure it's on. I have a few things. I need authorization for travel for Zach Roberts and Dave Carter to to Morrisonville for schooling, total cost is four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
And just to let everybody know, the schooling is for what now?
It's for the wastewater.
Wastewater.
I said schooling on this.
Yeah, so that's what it's for.
It's for the wastewater plant training, right, Greg?
Correct, so, they're gonna have the number of hours by, by New York State law, they have to have so many hours at the plant. They will both have the hours, but then they have to go through a schooling. And after they've done the schooling, they will be eligible to take the New York State exam. And once they pass it, they'll be certified. Right now, we are non-compliant, because with our wastewater facility, we need to have two licensed operators at the facility, and we only have one right now, it's only Dan. So, this is something that we really need to get done.
I'll make a motion that we pay the, the travel and training for Zach Roberts and Dave, Dave Carter.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Lachimora.
Trustee Valky.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty.
Aye, the ayes have it, authorization is granted. Anything else, trustee Southwick?
I do, a few people have asked, there is public skating on February eleventh, the nineteenth, the twenty-first, the twenty-third, and the twenty-fifth. There's also stick and puck on the nineteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-third. The times for those are all up on the village website, and you'll, I don't read the exact times for each one of them. Those are subject to change, so keep an eye on the village website for, for that. The last thing is, at our previous meeting, we had, we had discussed whether it was possible to register to vote online, but we didn't wanna commit to it without checking. I did check, and you can't vote, register to vote online, so. That's pretty easy to do, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Now, one question. Nick, have, now, both of these together, out of the four to five hundred, all three of these schools?
I think they're all, they're all different.
All different, so, like, eight eleven, eight eleven to eight sixteen, and seven twenty-eight, eight one, and five twelve to five twenty-four.
Three different schools.
Three different schools. So you have to take an award in every one of them?
We're doing all of them. No, I think we're doing it under one motion.
We did all of them.
Based on their travel, and all their, all their travel and their training for this particular sore license.
Oh, okay, all right.
So do we need a amended motion?
No, no.
No, we're good.
Okay.
Code Officer Cooper, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No sir, not this evening.
Okay. Nobody else is here to address the board, and we're not having an executive session. Without further ado, then, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourn this meeting, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All who say no, thank you, gentlemen.